Roll call of directors, please.
Barnes? Barnes?
Present.
Bowman?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Hermany?
Here.
Kaiser?
Here.
Maple? Stajkowski?
Here.
Zebro?
Yes.
All present.
Pledge allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, seek approval of the agenda.
I'll send more.
Motion by Diane, second by Peter. Any questions, changes, corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Prove of the minutes from the regular board meeting on January 18.
I'll send more.
I'll send it up.
Motion by Mike, second by Kelly. Any corrections? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Public forum. Public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board agenda. Is there anybody here tonight wishing to address the board? Okay. So you're done, we'll move on to item number seven. Special presentation discussion, elementary, middle, and high school goal updates.
What we're gonna do is, Mr. Messenberg, I think, is gonna get it on the screen. And just due to the playoff game tonight, and one of our administrators has a child playing tonight, we're gonna go in reverse order with the same report. So we're gonna start with the high school report, and then we have Mr. Grooby here. He'll move into the middle school report, and then I'll be doing the elementary report for Mrs. Caldwell, as she is at a child's event as well, and I excused her from tonight. So, we're just gonna start with high school, Mr. Lehman.
So first off, it is so nice to see your faces. Honestly, it's been probably about a year? It's really, it's been a long time. Besides man Jessica, hi. It's really nice to be here, and I'm really excited to just share with you where we're at within the high school. When we talked to you last year, our goal started on, we wanted our students to be college and/or career ready. That is still our vision, college and career readiness, and it's and/or, okay? So... But our overarching goal has changed, so when we met with our team leaders at the beginning of the year, we talked about, how can we move our focus instead of just focusing on the ACT? And the ACT Aspire and deciding whether our students are college and/or career ready. How can we switch our focus to something else? And we came up with this goal after looking at WADA's description of what college and/or career ready is. So this is our new overarching goal at the high school, where we want 100% of our graduating students to meet their college and/or career-ready benchmarks. So we now have benchmarks for our students on what it truly means to be college and/or career-ready. And the benchmarks that we tweaked a little bit from the Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators template is right here. And we gave this to all of our students to see, this is what it means to be college-ready on the top, and on the bottom here, this is what it means to be career-ready. We also focus on life-ready indicators through college and career planning. And on the bottom piece here is a goal sheet that every student filled out at the beginning of the year. So what does it mean to be college-ready? College-ready graduates, if you wanna be college-ready, you must have a 2.8 or higher GPA cumulative. When you get out of high school, you must have that. And then you must check two or more boxes in this area. So we have all of our students now looking at this, and now they can start setting goals. Do I wanna be college-ready? If I do, here are some of the things I need to do, whether it's getting a 3+ or higher on an AP exam, a 22 or higher on math, dual-credit college and English courses, or et cetera. And the other piece is the college-ready indicators. So if you wanna be college-ready, you need to have an identified career cluster interest, and then meet two or more of these benchmarks below. We have a lot of youth apprenticeship opportunities, so that's a box you can check, if you completed a Wisconsin Employee Skills Certificate through an internship. If you want to go into the military, passing the ASVAB is a checkbox. So these are what our kids see, and then our kids in... In January, they ended up taking a survey on where they're at currently in January. In addition, we talked about the career cluster piece, so they took a career cluster activity so that they have a better understanding on their career cluster matches. Based on the following questions underneath there, who they are, what they like, what they're good at, what are their best school subjects. And so each student was ranked within these 16 career clusters, so they could see, okay, after taking the survey, I could see my number-one career cluster based on my interests in all those questions could be architecture and construction. So it gives them an opportunity to see their area of interest. From there, the students, they're assessing themselves, and they did that in January, based on this survey, which determines if students are college and/or career-ready. So after they took that survey, this is our current data on our college and career readiness benchmarks. And within our school district, the number-one selection for the career cluster interest was actually through STEM. Ag and Food was second, followed by Human Services, then Health Science, Business, and then Law, and Public Law, Manufacturing, and so on. So this gives us a good sight of what students want to do, where they want to go, and when they select classes, if you notice, we did this in January, they select their classes right after this, a week after this. So now they have a better understanding on their career clusters, then they can start taking classes within their career clusters. The next slide shows what our students wanna do. At this point, we have 57% of our kids that wanna be college and career-ready. We have 25% that might not know what their career is yet, but they know they wanna go to college. And then we have 17.4% that just wanna focus on the career readiness piece. Now, those kids in that career readiness piece, that major focus is getting them into some sort of internship/ youth apprenticeship, and helping them with their specific career cluster.
And those, just to jump in, the three board members that sat in the CNI committee, there's a direct linkage between the information and the CNI committee. So I took the liberty of sending the same website that I sent to the three board members, to all the board members from the Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators. And it's called the Redefining Readiness website, and there's a very close relationship between WADA and the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. So that redefining website that I just sent to all the board a couple seconds ago is a good example of where the high school is bouncing off of taking college and career readiness, which I think is very progressive and right on point with where they need to be going.
So I remember our goal at the beginning, our overarching goal, is 100% of our graduating students to be college and/or career-ready. As of right now, we're at 95% of our seniors. So we know the 5% that aren't there yet, and we are working with them. Our Student Services Team, every week, they look at students that are struggling with this or that. Another piece of their agenda is which students are not, which seniors are not college and/or career-ready yet, and what can we do so that we reach our overarching goal of 100% of our students being college and/or career-ready.
What is your typical year for a senior?
This is, great question, this is our first time we're doing this. We have switched our focus because it was totally on the ACT and the Aspire, and our staff really struggled with that, because we know there's just so much more to school, and so much more to helping our students. We have a really good focus and a vision right now of our students, and even having, we now have areas to measure this, where we didn't have this before, on which kids are college-ready, which kids are career-ready, and now we have that. And we have had tremendous buy-in from our staff, because we've switched away from just that college readiness piece, which was the only data we really had. Which is, this is basically what I've showed you every year, right? So, obviously, within our departments, we're constantly looking at our data, what can we do better, what are we struggling on? And I'm just so proud of our staff of tweaking and getting a little bit better every year. If you look at our composite ACT scores on the right, we just wanna see improvement, right? And...
So, big picture with what this is showing, and just to kinda, you know, piggyback on what Mr. Lehman is saying, is most high schools in the state, when they brought out the state report cards, and here's the state report card, and here's your number, and this is what this means, and here are these gaps, essentially, college and career readiness and redefining ready says, okay, but here's what we want our students to do, based on A) their wants and also the needs of the larger community. So it's a whole other report card, if you will. Think about it like a local report card that gives you even more depth of information about our actual students, their actual desires, and then how we can connect them, you know, to college and career readiness. So think about it like another report card, but one that we consider to be equally as valid as the other numbers that the state has, ACT, ACT Aspire, all the different things.
These are just a few more data markers that we use within our, with our staff in regards to our ACT Aspire, this is our math. And science sub-data here, here's some of our English and reading data. So we just really try to focus a lot on data, and then saying, what can we do a little bit better? We had some talks last year, I remember, about AP and AP exams, and how can we get more kids to take AP? How can we get more kids to get 3 or higher? How can we get a higher percentage? We're at our highest that we've ever had in total number of AP students taking the exam, number of actual AP exams taken. What I'm probably most proud of is not the one on the left, but on the right, is the percentage of AP students with scores of 3 or higher. So we have the most number of kids getting 3 or higher, and we also have the highest percentage. And we have a lot of kids taking AP classes, too, and we're taking pretty much anybody, and we're encouraging kids to take higher classes, because especially those kids that wanna be college-ready, when you take these type of college-ready classes, it shows that you do better in college, and it shows that you do better on your ACT scores. So this is a huge testament to our AP teachers. When we talked about last year, what are some things you can tweak a little bit better in your classes? So I mean with each AP teacher separately, on their data, what they're doing well, what they can tweak, just like we do with the ACT piece within our departments, and they really take it to heart on trying to improve a little bit. And that's all that we ask out of our staff, is to just continually improve. This area's been a huge struggle this year. I know you've seen this data throughout, throughout this year, where our F-list has skyrocketed. At one point, we were in like the 250s, which is the highest since I have been here. And a lot of that pertains to just students not being here, and our teachers working their tails off now, trying to contact kids that aren't doing the work, the virtual kids especially. And then the initiative of, if you are a virtual kid, and you are struggling with a D or an F, we're getting you in here, and we're gonna have a learning center. David and I worked on getting an RDA learning center last year with Sue Bright in there, so we can put, bring kids in there that are struggling, which has helped our number go down. It's still not where we're at, but we are proud of where it was when it started in November.
Because the more recent number, that's end of semester, but more recent number is substantially down from 168.
Yes. The partnership piece that we were talking about with the career readiness, this is another piece you should be really proud of. With our staff just trying to help get kids college and/or career-ready, you've been really flexible with us with our dual-credit classes, and with our partnership with NTC, you know, it leads to the highest number of tuition credits attempted in the NTC region, and the highest tuition value in the region, saving students and families a lot of money and helping them with college and their career aspirations.
Thank you for this table, I was gonna ask you if you had this. That 248,000 is a...
That's just dual-credit, we're not even talking about AP stuff either.
I was wondering, do we track, do we have the data available to know credits that our students had going into the UW system? After you graduate?
We don't necess, no, we don't necessarily track that, no.
Okay.
It's so different, like, I still don't even know what credits are gonna transfer for my son who's going to the Midgee, you know, and it depends on where you're going. But what's fun is when I see students come back to the bench or whatever, and I ask them, you know, "How's it going? Did your credits transfer?" And what I notice is through the UW system, it's pretty slick. If they go to a UW system, our dual-credits transfer really, really well. The AP class is, what's nice about AP, that's pretty much anywhere you go, it's gonna transfer, but the dual-credit ones don't transfer as well out of state.
Yeah, what I can tell you is, I have a senior as well, and he's going to a UW school, so he'll definitely have first semester already done, just based on what he's done in junior and senior year in Mozzany, but it's possible with the dual-credit courses that he might have his full freshman year.
That's wonderful.
But I'll know more about that in a month or two, but I'll definitely have a real example going to a UW school, so, yeah, it's good, it's very good.
We were talking about our model, David, right? Brady, too, about small-town feel, big-time opportunities. It's a no-brainer to come here, I'm sorry to say. I will brag this school up, like, why would you not wanna come here with the number of dual-credit AP classes, small class sizes, we get to know our kids, the successes in extracurricular activities? It's just kinda, I'm just so proud to say I'm a part of this, and what we've done in the past. Here's our grant funding distributed through NTC because of our great partnership. So we're, what, 1/3 the size of Everest? Yet we get $5,000 more than Everest. Look at the entire Wassa district.
We're right there with Wassa.
Yeah.
Those NTC slides are worth looking back at in the data.
Number, yeah, so, I guess I don't have to look at all of it. This is our dual-credit opportunities, offerings, and then the number of courses taken, continually trying to get more and more kids into their area, and to take classes of meaning for them, which I think in turn helps us with why our F-list continues to go down when we get them in classes that they have of value. Obviously, this year is an anomaly with what that data shows, but...
Yeah, one of the things about NTC credit courses is, when I was going to school back in the 80s, right, I mean, technical colleges were totally different then than what they are today. The relationship between the technical colleges and the UW systems today is, you know, very connected.
Do you have AP? We graduated this thing here, I didn't know what AP was until we...
We had it, but it wasn't something that was, and definitely dual-credit courses weren't a thing.
And we're pretty lucky to be in Marathon County with NTC, 'cause they're one of the best technical colleges in the state of Wisconsin in regards to the dual-credit stuff. So, I guess it's, I don't have, a lot of this stuff we've talked about before, about closing our achievement gaps and universal design for learning. Having more depth of knowledge type of activities, that's a major focus right now that Julie is focusing on within our teachers. So the higher the depth of knowledge, like, if we can get to depth-of-knowledge four activities, usually there's more student engagement than if it's depth-of-knowledge one, where you're just remembering, you know, A, B, C, or D, and, you know, pieces of this or that. That's really a major focus for us right now, to try to increase engagement and higher-order thinking. So, any questions?
I do need, for example, I said I had some of the exit interviews for seniors. So, as I looked through their binders, I had noticed that they had changed, you know, what they wanted to do now in the future, completely different than what they had put in their binder. So now knowing what we're doing in the studies, and, you know, how can we, where are we catching these kids before they wanna make that life choice? You know, if they're like teetering between a career of going to college versus, you know, a technical college, how quick are we catching, can we catch these kids quicker?
I think what we're doing now is much better, because they're looking at the college and career readiness piece three times a year. They're looking at their career cluster right before they choose their classes for the next year, and then helping align, you should align your classes for that next year based on what your career cluster is at that point. And, I mean, I can use my kids for an example, they switch all the time, they switch all the time on what they wanna do. Adeline switched two times this last week on what she wants to do, and we're just trying to, she's like taking classes now based on what she wants to do at this point, and it might switch next year, so that we're gonna have to switch classes again.
Is that at about sophomore level? 'Cause my son just signed up, he's in 8th grade, I didn't see where there was any focus on clusters yet for...
Career clusters, we just started it this year, every January, every kid at the high school is looking at their career cluster, and seeing what their survey that they take, what it comes out to be. It doesn't mean they have to be...
Survey said all students, I took that as even freshmen.
Yep, yeah, 9 through 12.
And the thing is, Nate, that I think is working great is that you keep revisiting it. So it's not like I did this, oh, I forgot all about what I did at the beginning of the year, and that's what you have to keep moving a kid's mind. And we all know as parents, or, you know, just being who we are, we change our minds, but you still have that kinda, that, you know, focus you have to still go back to.
And I think a lot of it is just creating the awareness.
That's what I wanted to say.
Even knew what career clusters were.
Right.
And, I mean, they're always there, they just weren't categorized like that.
Right.
And really, they're just getting such a great, I mean, I would, my son switched to, I think, four times, and he's senior. So I think it's just the awareness of, wow, I could be interested in that, and I could be, you know, and these classes align with my thought process about this, and it's not necessarily a bad thing, I don't think, but they're challenging themselves to think critically about pathways for themselves, so, in a way, it's just a great exposure.
And I think that way, it's almost better, because they know it's okay, I can change, I'm not locked into this. This is just, you know, like you said, we change in a month, and I'll get so, I think it's fair enough.
I was singularly focused on raising finance from the bottom.
I did. I knew it.
Your career cluster?
I was sitting next to you.
I was wondering if you were gonna say something.
I enjoyed stimming.
Yeah, I thought you would.
I did see that.
My mind is thinking already.
At the middle school level, like, what Nate's doing with all the career clusters and driving the kids on where they wanna go after high school, is where we're going with our enrichment activities in the middle schools is going to support that, so when they do walk into the high school, they have that kind of theme of what it's gonna be like. When we talk about my goals next, you're gonna see that in our intervention time, we're getting now the building blocks on, okay, how can we help those kids get ready for that once when they get to the high school level? So then, it's kinda like you've already started the ball running.
Why don't we do this? Thank you very much, I know Nate, I know you...
Thank you.
Good luck tonight with the game.
Yep, thanks for presenting.
It's nice seeing you all here.
Yep.
Hopefully we'll see you in a year or so.
I'll just piggyback what Mr. Grooby just said, as we were looking at, my wife and I'm messaging my son's math teacher for what he should do as a freshman, there was already the focus of thinking about what he, what his future would be as far as where his focus maybe towards math would go, and we really appreciated that, already at 8th grade, it was, it helped our decision-making.
Some overriding connections between the high school and the middle school, and I'm gonna let Mr. Grooby take it over. And you kinda heard Mr. Lehman mention it, higher-order thinking? So if you think back to my interview, those that were on my interview, higher-order thinking, construction of knowledge, the value of the young school, and material being taught, but then four critical questions, which Mr. Lehman had linked in there, what do you want the kids to know, how do you know what they know it, what do you do when they don't get it, what do you do when they already know it? That's something also that's a primary focus for Mr. Grooby as well, but also at the elementary school. So just on that note, there's connections vertically like that between all of the buildings. Mr. Grooby?
So when you look at our school-wide goal, you're gonna see here that the concepts of looking at what kids need, we have a response to that, monitoring their growth, celebrating their success, in a way that we can make sure that we've committed to clarifying and improving the kids overall. We wanted to include this year the social-emotional learning, just simply because we knew of what COVID was gonna bring our kids. And then obviously, the response to the intervention process, that when a kid is brought into the SSD team, what do we do with that, what does it look like? So as we go through this, I want you to take a look at the FastBridge data, because our overall instructional goal talked about how we wanted to keep, with the development of the guaranteed viable curriculum with Michelle and the work during our in-service time and the multi-level systems of support, we looked at the 50% of our students will reach the proficiency areas in math and ELA. And if you look at what we've been able to do, this number was a little bit surprising to me, 'cause I figured it would drop just because of the COVID and not having the normal route of school that we did in the spring, and it kinda filtered into the fall. But the two tabs on the bottom, the first one I have up here is the 2019-20 numbers from last year. And you're gonna see that 54.72% of our kids in the fall of last year, and then if you scroll over, we're above that at 54. If you go to the 2020, 2020-21 year right now, when we did our assessment in the fall, 53.8. So a little bit of a drop, but not anything crazy, and I thought, okay, that's pretty good. And then in the winter, 52.74. So it wasn't a drastic drop in our FastBridge scores like I was anticipating, and this number has contributed to where we are with the implementation of Eureka Math, I think, Michelle, the last three years? And now, the solid second year of our English curriculum in Lucy-Cawkins, okay? Plus, you're starting to see kids hear the same language from 4th grade to 5th grade, 5th grade to 6th grade, 6th grade to 7th grade. And what that means is that kids are getting it quicker. So you had a big gap, right? Spring was bad, summer was bad, and we were really worried about what the fall was gonna look like. This data supports that the curriculum is supporting our kids, okay? And that tied right into our high-quality instructional goal for this year. Our school-wide goals, and this is where we talk about the fundamental piece of PLCs. We wanted to make sure that 100% of our staff use their meetings to collaborate, plan, and monitor student growth. And in our PLCs, these four questions are the staple, these are like the cornerstone of what are we doing with students, what do we want them to know, how do we know that they know it, and especially question three, what are we doing if they don't get it, and what are we doing if they do? And I included there two examples in our 4th grade of what their PLC agendas look like, and then also what their team meeting examples look like. And if you look at those when you have a chance, you're gonna notice that the team meetings are the nuts and the bolts, like, what are we doing for HET day, or whatever that may be? But the PLC is where you're looking at the data and dividing the kids, and answering those four questions. The school climate and culture goal, this one revolved right around the data that we had collected from this perception survey that was done last May. Now, the perception from the staff is we gained some points. And I'll be quite frank and honest here, when I came in, the schedule was a bear. That was a big concern in my middle school. That was a ball of fire. And we were able to migrate through that process, and really, it helped in COVID, the block schedule was a blessing. It really was. And teachers are learning to use that 80 minutes now. And when we talked about going into the next school year last summer, the concept of block schedule was not nearly as scary. Now, is there work to do in it? 100%. Do we still have to look at our intervention time and enrichment time? 100%. And you're gonna see that as we continue through here. Paul and I do make it a point that we have an administrator that attends all the team meetings, that was part of this goal, and Paul is still continuing the anti-goalian not Mozzany, okay? So that's been a staple since I've gotten here. The strategic family and community engagement improvement goal is that we wanna communicate with families on every office referral that we have in Skyward. And every time that, whether a teacher contacts a family, or the office contacts a family, we wanna make sure that that's... that's documented, so that we have evidence that we're meeting this goal. Not only do we do this when we, we put office referrals or things into our Skyward, but we also have the other data that staff are using, as simple as just having their notepad next to their phone to talk and record conversations that they have with parents. We have staff that implement our SEL curriculum second step weekly, and then we also have our mental health professional development options that we've done in our in-services, and you guys are familiar with those, because we've shared those. Obviously, those have changed a little bit with COVID, but the mental health of our staff and the mental health of our kids was really the top priority, especially when we were faced with what COVID kind of brought to us. Leadership and organizational structural goals, this was very similar to what we had as last year, because we looked at this as one of the reasons why we scored well in our school perception survey, is because we developed our leadership around the fundamental PLC questions. And administrators told me a long time ago, keep those four questions at the forefront, and your leadership will pan out. Things will pan out for you. And that's really what, what we were looking at. If you look at point number three, continued professional development opportunities in relation to UDL training, this goes right into what we talked about in curriculum and standards today, is getting our staff trained a little bit more in that, to looking at that universal design for learning for kids. And that's where you're going to see an improvement with our enrichment opportunities in that TA block, which, which works great, because now instead of 40 minutes, or, excuse me, instead of 30 minutes a day, you're gonna have a 40-minute window where we can enrich kids using that UDL process. All right, let's get down to the nuts and bolts of, of what it is that we're, the action steps. Obviously, FastBridge is our monitoring tool, we're gonna continue to use that. The continuation of intervention time and developing staff understanding and capacity to better this time. This is where we have to continue our work. If you think of our schedule, and Mr. Hanson will get to know this now that he's gonna have a fifth grader coming up, and he's got an eighth grader that's leaving, is you've got that 80-minute block. What are you doing in that 80-minute block that's gonna get kids ready? How are you helping them answer question three if they didn't get it? How are you helping them answer question four if they didn't? And then what are you doing to get them ready for high school? And that's where that ACP work, curriculum, our career clusters comes into play. I talked about the continued implementation of Eureka Math in Lucy-Cawkins. Currently, right now, we still meet with CISA, can't think of her name, Nicole.
Nicole Lehrer.
She comes in and she supports our staff in Lucy, along with Mrs. Buttala and Mrs. Lewin's, helping our ELA folks continue through that. Hats off to those people. It has been a difficult transition, but they're doing it. And you're starting, the, the data that I showed you is, is evidence of that. We didn't have a huge drop in our FastBridge scores. We recreated the SST process, and honestly, I called Nate, and, and I said, Nate, this needs, this needs a facelift. How can I get this better? Because your SST is the house where the RTI process starts, and, and we needed to redo this. This was not something that I felt comfortable with. So we went to, instead of monthly, weekly meetings, and we assigned roles and responsibilities to all the team members. Team members consist of me, the two counselors, the two school sites, and Mr. Reinschmann.
So in RTI process, if you have four guiding questions, which you hear come up, heard my interview a couple of years ago, what do you want the kids to know? How do you know what they know? What do you do when they don't get it? It's that third question, what do they do when they don't get it? So, in other words, closing the gaps, whether they be special ed or otherwise, or if somebody's struggling for whatever reason, whether it be remote learning or something else. It's a group that's identified to be doing, setting up a system. What are the, what is the systematic approach to interventions in order to remove this student from struggling to not struggling anymore? Or what are the steps or, or evidence-based interventions that can be used if they go in that direction to get them from here to there? So that's that third question of the four questions, dialing into that, whether it be academic or behavioral. You know, the PVA S would be the behavioral aspect, but that all falls under RTI, okay? So that's that third question, academic or behavioral, what do you do to close those gaps?
And the fourth question down there is, whoop, 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 is the enrichment piece. What are you doing if they do know? And this is where, right now, our eggs right now are in question three. That's where we have a lot of, of our time spent. But the other part of that is what are we doing for those kids that do know it? What are we doing for those high flyers and GT kids? And one of the changes we made this year was getting Mr. Jacobs involved during that intervention time, because he is our GT coordinator. For it would make sense to have your GT coordinator working with your higher-level thinking kids. And those were the ones that scored well on the assessment. So there's still work to do here. I'm not gonna lie to you guys and tell you that this is a polished wall. It is not. But there is, is, this was one of our goals of, and action steps on how to improve our kids overall. And then, you can click on the goal checklist here, and this just gives you an idea of where we currently feel like we are, and we will go back to this, this spring to take a look, to see, all right, green, yep, we're feeling like we're doing good there. Red, no, we need to readjust this, because we either didn't get to it or we're not there yet. So we color coordinated it, and you can take a look just to see if you were looking at data on, on how our team leads felt that we were getting to where we need to be. Any questions?
Thank you.
If you could jump to the elementary presentation, I'm gonna jump into that myself. As I said, Mrs. Caldwell is at a family event, so I'll be jumping to this. And in the assistance that I might need, I've asked Michelle to help me out as a former elementary principal herself of multiple years. But I will do my very best with it. Generally speaking, on that very first page, I know we had some questions before that was put into color through path of that, that, this picture. But it's a very fun activity that both Mrs. Caldwell, Mr. Soderbergh are involved in on a regular basis, in terms of communicating with their, their students and their staff, and it usually goes pretty well. I'm gonna jump to an end document that's listed in there, the, it's a goals checklist. I'm gonna brief over the goals checklist, and on that checklist, what you'll see at the very top, and it's at the, the last part right here. So on this part right over here, well on our way, not there yet, don't know, I think this is a good overview of where are they at with their goals from a holistic perspective. Couple of big things that are, that are going really well, continuing what I need now time, creating pathways for student success in the elementary level, whereas at the, the high school and the middle school level, they talk about, more about RTI and SST and these sorts of things. The win time is, is similar to that in the elementary level. So, you know, it stands for what I need now in terms of what are you, what are you struggling with, or what, what do you need for an enhancement or an enrichment? So that's something they feel very confident with in terms of their direction and their goals. Some of the other pieces, and I'm gonna scroll down to something directly related, wait, the school board, which I thought was in its under, school board goal. They actually established a school board goal, and I thought this was very good to look at, about the, the elementary school in particular, and my talking to them, and, and regular conversations with them. They definitely want, wanted a school board goal, so they're continually connect and making sure that they're connecting with the school board with respect to, you know, not, not just administration, but also the elementary staff themselves. So there's some notes on there about COVID impacted this this year. But you can see some of those goals, and I think it's important to focus on, is that they're gonna continue to invite board members to activities at schools. I know that's something that the board and I, that we've talked about collectively, making sure that we, we have renewed focus as a board about staff sort of outreach, not just to the elementary school, but to the other buildings. But it's really good to see that in an actual goal step for all of us, also presentations and attendance at meetings. So I think that's very healthy to be a part of their goal structure. But something I thought was important to point out, they know it's not something we can do this year, but as soon as we start coming out of this pandemic, as we're starting to do, it is an overall focus.
And just to kind of enhance what David was saying, when each building puts together their school improvement plan template, we use a very familiar to most districts as kind of a CISA nine school improvement template that involves everything from kind of instructional goals, as we'll see, themes in all three of the principals threads, as well as kind of that social emotional piece, to staff collaboration pieces, to use of data piece. And that last piece that this is particularly rated to is on the third day of our data retreat, we do look at all the school perception data. So this goal is directly driven out of school perception data, which I think is important for you to, you know, take note of, is that we do go through all of those areas of the data, and then the school perceptions categories. You remember, there's probably 15, don't quote me on that, different categories related to all kinds of structures within the school. One of them is related to board relationships, board connections, board communications. So this is derived directly from that school perception data as well.
Brady, if you could jump back to action steps, I think it's the third slide of four. I think it's the, there you go. So on this particular slide, I think a couple of the things that kind of pop out to me in terms of some of their action steps, including encore teachers and support staff and professional development, that's a very inclusionary piece. So when you see inclusionary practices, the, the perspective on that, especially with that first bullet point, is that it, it's great when our teachers are tied into professional development, but there's many more staff, about half of our staff, of 325 staff, about 150 are teachers, and then there's 170 other staff that also are involved with students a lot, you know, health, room aids, educational assistance, you name it. So that was a piece that I think is a targeted piece, and it's a very intentional piece that I can see that is regularly being brought up. Encore teachers and supports, the, the thing about encore teachers in an elementary school, and being married to an encore teacher myself, there's, you can sometimes get out of the, the regular loop with your, your first, second, third grade teachers. So I think it's very healthy when you see the connection between, you know, the, the inclusionary practices, making sure that, you know, your PE teachers, your music teachers, your art teachers, all the, the encore teachers are connected to core curriculum. And I, I think that's healthy, I think that's a, it's a good target, and you can see it connected right there. And then intentional instructional conversations, they've, they've pulled me in on some of these instructional conversations. I know they've pulled Michelle, and they've pulled other staff into these important instructional conversations about different ideas and different thoughts that they have. So I know in working with the elementary team, they're a very progressive group, they have lots of great ideas, and they're always looking to improve learning for students, even if it's, you know, on that edge.
Their main instructional goal that encompasses basically all the facets of the different categories within their goal, is that they're increasing the reading achievement of their kids.
Right.
And they're looking at the, the sped versus non-sped students, the students who are free and reduced lunch versus non, specifically in tracking that. So in some of those data links, you will see in her presentation, the bulk of what they are looking at is trend data over time, the percentage of their kids who scored at what is called the Fountas and Pennell reading level, because at those younger ages, you know, they read at certain levels, A through Z, in terms of text complexity of books. And they're looking at having, you know, 80 to 95% or 90 plus was their target this year. In, in May, when they do their final assessment of those kids' reading levels through a diagnostic assessment that each of the teachers are trained to give, that they have their kids falling in, that their target was 90 to 99% of them will be at or above a grade level expected reading level. And if you look at their trend data, they've been really, they've been meeting it or exceeding it, and it just keeps getting higher, so.
Yeah. One thing to note about that is they do an excellent job, as all of our buildings do, in terms of trying to close the gap. So when they're looking at that summer data retreat meeting that, that has been happening for multiple years, a lot of, a good portion of that time is looking at like gap analysis and saying, okay, we have students with disabilities, students without disabilities, you know, this group is at this number, this group is at this number, and then starting to work on strategies about how we close that gap consistently over time, especially within regards to reading at the elementary level.
And you will see at K1, mid-year, like, for example, 1920, the kindergarten and first grade ranges look like, whoa, they're never gonna make 90%, right? There's the most growth in reading levels between kindergarten and first grade. Just to kind of keep that in mind, you will see that it seems like second and third grade were closer. They're not necessarily a smarter group, although if you have a child in that group, I will tell you they are a smart kiddo.
That's right.
But it's just that the progression of, of skills at that emergent reading level of kindergarten, first grade, they progress through the text complexities just faster. So that is not uncommon to see a huge jump from mid-year to end of year for kindergarten as well as first grade.
Those of you that have had children in that age range, as I do right now, you know, when that hits, the light bulb switches, and all of a sudden, it's, it's on. Any questions for any of us on the elementary information? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, student board report.
Yes, quite a few activities. I know just some that are listed here, some that have happened since this report was written. I know that we're conference champions for basket, girls' basketball, and also boys' hockey. We're also regional champs for boys' hockey. We have another playoff game tonight for boys' basketball, which is exciting.
Yes.
And our co-op girls' hockey team, The Storm, is in the state semifinals, I believe, tomorrow. So all of our teams and clubs and activities are extremely active. It's something that I'm writing about in the link article, which I think the deadline for my article is tomorrow. I got most of it written, but you'll see a part in there about clubs and activities and sports, and, and the school district being open for over 100 days, and not just in person, but also with these clubs and activities, are doing so many things, like a dodgeball tournament, the Student Senate-sponsored dodgeball tournament, instead of a dance for the Sadie Hawkins deal. And it went off very well with dress-up days and the like at the high school. There were several other big activities as well aside from that. You can see a couple pictures. I'll reference DECA in my link article. And also, the tech club will also be referenced in my link article, as well as Mozeni manufacturing, which is listed there as, as very active groups in the update to the board. So we're excited, as I'll say in the link article, and I'll say now, to be not only in person, but also extremely active, open, and involved with our students, including tonight. I'm sure that the, the gym, I know, is sold out tonight. I just saw an email, so if you're looking to go and you don't already have a ticket, sorry about that.
That is so sad.
But I'm, but, but it is.
I almost went, yeah.
We are maxing capacity, and, and I'm sure it'll be a great crowd. We did have, and I think I put it in my board report last week, if not, I will for next week, is we were complimented by the WIA and thanked by the WIA directly for being so open. So the, the school board and the school district was complimented directly, I think I put it in my, I'm gonna put it in my board report for this week, is that the WIA sent a message because we hosted the sectional finals over the weekend, and they had said it was a very healthy atmosphere. They appreciated so much energy and activity, and for us being open. Because as I think, if you don't know, Madison is pretty much closed down, so all these end-of-year state tournaments, they're not happening in Madison, they're sort of happening all over the state. So we've been hosting sectionals as much as we can, and we'll continue to do it as much as we are able. But we received a direct compliment on that, which was great from the WIA.
That is.
It was way back yet.
Tom Shapransky.
Yes, Mr. Shapransky, that's right. And that's all I have for this.
Brady. Approval of the consent agenda.
I will second.
Motion by Kaiser, second by Gorman, to approve the consent agendas. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Approval of the monthly voucher list.
Do we need to ask if anything should be pulled out of this consent?
Well, I turned and left that.
Okay.
I, I, that's why I paused.
Okay.
Sorry. Is there anything that you'd like to show?
No, I just, sorry I did that.
We just didn't.
All right. I, I was pausing, but, okay.
Motion to approve the monthly voucher list.
All right, motion by Barnes, second by Hanson. Rule call, please.
Barnes?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hermani?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Stankowski?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
All yes.
Approval of the monthly treasures report. I will make that motion. Motion by Hanson?
I'll second.
Second by Gorman. Any questions? Rule call, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hermani?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Stankowski?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
All yes.
Superintendent Board Discussion.
Yep, I have five points there, which I'll jump over quickly here, but before I do that, I'll jump on the incident that happened today. I did send a voice message, text message, and email to all families right before the board meeting, just indicating that the transformer that unfortunately blew or mishapped has been fixed. It took us a little longer to get the elementary school up and running, but they, the elementary school was the last building to come online by three thirty, but all buildings are operational two fifty-five PM on Friday. I was notified about one incident, so we actually have one COVID active at this point in nineteen quarantines, which is still substantially low. Our numbers have been substantially low. We're very happy about that and believe the mitigation standards and practices we have in place are working. There's clear evidence of that. One thing I wanted to list about snow days, this has gone around a little bit, is that snow days are going to save just snow days. If I call a snow day a full day, it's not my intention to also do remote learning on those days. Thank.
Yes.
You're welcome. I believe that staff were okay with that as well. Some of the initial registrations are in, we'll be working with the high school. I mentioned there in point three that every district starts with high school staffing because their numbers are more poor, more students have more choices in the high school. We'll look at those numbers and then we'll start our staffing timeline, which the board has already approved, March, April, and May with decision points for the board. All right, the Health Insurance Subcommittee and Fund Seventy-Three Subcommittee. Health Insurance Subcommittee met today, Fund Seventy-Three Subcommittee, I believe, was yesterday or the day before. It was Thursday, last week?
Thursday, right.
Last week.
Yeah. Both are going very well and I think we're going to, there's going to be some exciting opportunities coming before the board in short order in both regards. So I'm getting wonderful reports from both meetings, I'm talking to several staff after both meetings with some great discussion coming out of both. I put a note in about the timeline as it relates to the mission and vision for the athletic and activities, you know, setting. But Mr. Smith, once we're between seasons here, we'll be moving that, on that, with that particular timeline.
That went in part is from the discussion last month.
Yes.
Diane had questions, Casey, about that.
Yeah, and well, that's what I would, I think we're, you're going to also still have board members also attend on this, the committee that has been standing already.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's, yes.
I think that was Justin Matt, I believe, yes.
Correct, correct. And that's going to be start of March, so it's going to be the April two thousand and twenty-one would be used for meetings with Justin approved the handbook. So all of April, April is going to be used for that piece. This year, our spring season is a little bit pushed back. If you remember that a portion of the state made a decision to move its fall season to the spring, which has made our spring season, for lack of a better word, a hybrid. So that's why it's creating some, you know, some of these gaps that otherwise, we really would have been into spring sports by then, but that's going to be pushed back a little bit, just as I had to add.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, old business, A, item A, discussion impossible decision, approval of second semester virtual education pay and structural changes. So this is a repeat, all right, we're bringing it back this month from our December meeting.
Right.
At which point we tabled it.
There's some detailed information, more so from the high school and the middle school, that talks about some struggles very early with some of our remote learners in terms of failure rates. But then some sharp successes, and I'm giving an overview because that's what both the middle school and the high school data shows, that, you know, the system that we put in place is working, that we saw it drastic. If you look at the high school, we can look at high school, I referenced it a little bit in Nate's initial discussion. There's point one about student achievement in that link, and you'll see the graph on the right side, which is an extension of the information that Mr. Lehman started to present as an aggregate. But if you'll look at those dates, November, and then December, and then January, a substantial drop-off in number of asks through targeted work, through the Wednesdays, the focus with the Wednesdays. So essentially what the information is showing, and Mr. Grubie is here as well with the middle school information, they saw an equal drop after targeting, all right, we had some initial struggles, but here's what we're going to do, here's what we're going to change, phone calls, bringing kids in, making some adjustments, we'll call it COVID adjustments, in order to really attack this, which has been successful at all levels, I might add.
Are there any students in the, in the school on Wednesday, high school on the Wednesdays?
They do bring some students in. I know, like, yes.
Labs and things.
There are some students that have been.
Bands.
Yep.
You know, they're coming in for lessons, they're coming in, you know.
My, my son has been into the lab and for bands, and alternative ed students sometimes come in, there's, you know, it's sort of a hodgepodge, but yes, there are.
Peter, you got a question?
I don't think it applies to this agenda item, but I just want to educate myself because I don't think I've ever, in my two years on the board, come across the experience that I'm going to have here for whether it's this one or the next couple. There are some rules on who can and cannot make motions on some of these that are returned, correct? Because of how the motion or the vote went last time?
Only if it's held within that same meeting. If it's, if it's an agenda item that was discussed at a previous meeting and brought back at a new meeting, anybody can make those motions.
But in this case, it was tabled.
This one I thought was tabled, but for the upcoming ones, I just wanted to prepare for.
Right. If it's during the same meeting and you voted.
You have to be on the prevailing side.
Yeah, you have to be on the positive side.
So for these items, this one's obviously was tabled, it doesn't matter, but all, they're all open for any motion.
Correct.
Right.
Thank you.
So with respect to, my overall recommendation is to continue doing what we're doing. Our focus right now is on the COVID nineteen vaccinations in the short term. Spring break is twenty-seven, twenty-six school days away, ballpark. Shortly after spring break, we'll be through first vaccination and second vaccination with our staff, which will be mid-August and our August board meeting. So my recommendation is to, is to approve the changes for second semester. And if we're going to review them before the end of the school year, that that would be in April.
Anybody interested in making a motion, making a motion in about this agenda item? The approval of the second semester virtual education pay and structural changes?
Which is basically what we, same thing as the first semester.
Yes.
I'll make that one.
A motion, I'll second. Second by Kaiser to essentially extend to the second semester the same changes that were made from a compensation and a structure perspective. Certainly that was in place by the end of the first semester, in some cases that began that way. Any discussion? Questions? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Eight one. Item thirteen, the discussion impossible decision, approval of open retirement in relationship to COVID nineteen.
This is consistent to what we, we did late, middle of last summer in terms of COVID nineteen retirement incentive. I don't consider this something that we would continue in perpetuity.
We discussed this last month.
Yes.
Ordinarily, we would have, staff would have had to have made the decision by the end of January. This would grant the extra month, meaning through another two weeks from now.
We do have staff that are waiting for this decision.
Is there a motion? If not, we'll go on to item fourteen.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the open retirement in relationship to COVID nineteen, delaying through the end of February, the requirement to notify the district of an intent to retire with the additional payment, meaning the eligibility criterion is laid out in the materials, items one through five. A motion by Zebra, who is the second, Stankowski? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Couple comments, Kevin.
Go ahead. Barnes?
Was, was there any effort put forth to look at whether, in lieu of using Fund ten dollars for a thousand dollar bonus to use Fund seventy-six dollars and do something in retirement, post, post-employment retirement health benefits for staff? It's maybe consistent with some administrative offerings?
We, Fund Seventy-Three, we did.
Sorry.
Yeah, we did look at Fund Seventy-Three, there's ample dollars in Fund Seventy-Three. The board asked about, in the last meeting, about the availability of dollars. There's ample dollars in Fund Seventy-Three to do whatever the board chooses to do with post-retirement benefits. So we looked at multiple options. It's just a matter of, there's other discussions going on at the Fund Seventy-Three committee. In other words, the, the, the short-term committee that I know Kevin is part of, along with Megan. There's multiple discussions going on in that committee that I think will, are going to bear out some, some changes of some kind likely.
I think that's true, should the board and the district come to agreement. And anybody who would participate in this early retirement program, should the district, should the board approve any changes, let's say in the next ninety days, would any employee would be eligible to participate in any prospective changes?
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Because the changes would be effective June thirtieth, which, or no later than June thirtieth for sure, for certain. At least that's the way we're discussing it as of now.
It's my understanding from the Fund Seventy-Three committee, I think we're calling it something else, but on that particular.
Post-employment benefits, whatever.
That there's going to be a recommendation back to the board at some point within the next two months.
Oh, yes, for sure.
For sure.
If this is approved, is there anything stopping us from using Fund Seventy-Three for this thousand dollars?
No.
Should that be part of the motion? Is that a?
It does, it's.
I don't agree.
I think that a thousand, I don't think would, would it?
No.
Oh, it would?
Yes.
Did the thousand dollars last year for the one or two people come from that fund?
Yes.
Oh, it did, okay.
So we are approving it out of Fund Seventy-Three, if.
I didn't know that, so, okay.
So we can use Fund Seventy-Three dollars to bonus employees?
I, I think the, I would word that a little differently.
I would, my preference would be for the business manager to work through the legalities of the best fund that it makes sense to come from. And therefore to not put that as part of the actual motion. But certainly if we can use it because we have, we are, we have overfunded that, that is certainly something we should do.
I think, I think we're talking about two things that are very, very similar. But with, with all the really good work going on in that subcommittee, you know.
We're spending a lot of time talking about the, 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 in the committee, we're spending a lot of time talking about the payment that is made by the district into the TSA. That's where the lion's share of the conversation has been centered, with, with some alternatives to that. Not, I mean, that's, it would, I think that's all I should really say at this time. Matt, I don't know that that answered your question necessarily.
No, not necessarily, but, I mean, my, my comment to this whole agenda item is, I have absolutely no problem incentivizing staff through an early retirement, especially given the current COVID situation. However, I am adamantly opposed to a lack of consistency in re, retirement offerings between all our staff and the school.
I think that is in line with what you had communicated to us in person verbally last month. We do have a motion by Zebra, a second by Stankowski. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Seven two.
Would you roll the nose?
Hanson and Barnes. Thank you. Item fourteen, new business, fourteen A, discussion impossible decision, summer school programs and staffing.
Yeah, there's a detailed slides that Mr. Messenberg will be pulling up here in just a second. Both of our summer school principals, the, they asked me to zip through this. I am meeting with them again tomorrow. We've had a couple of meetings, and they've had others. Long and short of it, they're set to run June eighth to July thirty-first. You can see if you scroll down a little bit, that they're going to have both virtual and in-person offerings. So very similar to what we did last year, is that the end of the pandemic instead of at the start of the pandemic, which is very exciting for them, because I give kudos to both of our summer school principals. You know, Kurt Vanenboel and Megan Korok, they were the first staff members, or administrators actually, to have to, to work and run schools in person, you know, probably in, one of the first in the entire state of Wisconsin. So they did an outstanding job in that regard. We had a few bumps. We learned a lot that we took into the regular school year. But what you can tell in terms of the offerings, it's very similar offerings that we've done in years past. Academic enrichment, this is the big piece on the bottom. This is something we pulled in last year and we're going to be continuing this. This is a very common piece in most any district's summer school. It was a very successful piece last year, something that the board put some curriculum dollars into for summer curriculum, some reading curriculum dollars. It's not going to affect anything negatively, it's only a win for us, meaning that we're going to have students coming to summer school, but we're going to be making sure to also, you know, focus on math and reading, at least for a small part of that day or the part of their school day, while they're also experiencing all those enrichment activities wrapped around that K five academic enhancement. So that's something that I want to make reference to, that we started last year going into COVID and we think is most important as we're coming out of this pandemic, to continue to stop that slide or summer slide that everybody sorts of talk about. You saw it referenced a few times in some of the data presentations from both the elementary and the middle school especially. Okay? Couple of the data pieces that you'll see about the enrichment, and, and these are important pieces that we had talked about. There were lots of successes with respect to attacking. There were lots of successes with respect to attacking, uh, looking at sixty eight percent of our students who attended the academic period either made a positive gain or remained in or at or above grade level for reading. That is outstanding. Uh, Tampa said the students who attended the academic period and did not make positive gains missed at least one third or more of summer school. In other words, we can see the ones that, you know, that weren't making a gain, some of it was because of their lack of attendance in those summer school sessions. So, the academic piece, the academic enrichment piece is an important piece. It's very common in most summer schools and it's something that, that hasn't really been part of Mozzanee School District Summer School until last year. But we're looking to continue it, uh, for very good reasons as you list there. Couple of goals that, um, both of our summer schools listed, increase the number and registration with more options for enrichment classes. So, in other words, yeah, we wanna pick up the numbers a little bit, we think our summer school is outstanding. Uh, the vast majority of it, because most of our construction is, is, uh, done and we don't have any of those sorts of things. Uh, really, they're gonna get in the way, so most of the summer school is gonna be in the high school, middle school complex, uh, with some spread outside of that. You know, for obvious reasons, so there's not a lot of traveling back and forth. We can keep a lot of it housed in that area, but they'll be, um, and then looking at their gains in reading. And, uh, continue to focus on that with those, um, the curriculum was purchased by the school board, uh, for the summer program. So, we're excited about it, we're excited about the summer school, they're starting to roll with it a little bit. Um, I think I have a meeting with them, uh, with the summer school principals tomorrow. Uh, they can continue to jump forth into the registration process as we roll into spring break in twenty six, twenty seven days. And then after that, we're pushing, you know, prom, graduation and summer school, which is exciting.
And if I remember correctly, we do get state aided on this as well.
Absolutely.
On summer school.
Yeah, it's not, it's not the same.
No, but.
But yes, we do get state aid for summer school, absolutely.
All right, uh, I'll seek a motion, if anyone is interested in making one, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Gorman, second by Kaiser, to approve the summer stu- school programs and staffing. Any, uh, questions, concerns?
David, will you give us an update in the future as like what the numbers are looking for with the enrollment?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
The addition of the academic enrichment, um, I think will drive the numbers way up because as a parent, I know that most people who didn't put their kids in summer school was because it was all fun and they didn't have any academic, not enough academic piece, so I think it's a really great addition.
Why can't you say that?
It'll make Michelle very happy that it's, uh.
I thought it was crazy we were putting in.
Do appreciate Julie's support with making sure that, um, this is something that found its way in last year. Uh, but it's also something, it's one of those, you know, COVID related things that is a very positive thing for our school district because it, it is intended to stop the summer slide. That to incorporate a specific curriculum, that's not just any curriculum, but it's one that's linked to what we're already doing in the elementary school and the middle school. Uh, you know, so that's, those sorts of things are connected, so it, that is something we believe is, is critical. Um, thank you.
Motion by second, and second have been made, any other conversation, discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries. Item fourteen B, discussion impossible decision, the cancel twenty twenty, spring twenty twenty San Antonio, Texas extended field trip. I asked for this to be put back on the agenda. I sent an email today to Jessica, um, when she asked about it being on the agenda. And I mentioned to her, or I told her that, um, really, there are two reasons that I asked for it to go back on the agenda. Number one is that we have maybe not more relevant or pertinent, but certainly additional information, uh, now that we did not have when we first voted this down by a vote, a margin of two to seven, to reimburse seventy five percent. Uh, and that is that, uh, the, uh, travel vendor did not actually go bankrupt. So, that is a new piece of information that we have. And that our attorney, uh, has indicated it is of the belief that is, it would cost more money to try to recover than we are likely to recover. Um, and it prospectively, uh, could drive the vendor to declare bankruptcy. Uh, again, maybe not relevant, but I did want to include that. Also, I wanted to let you know, I've received about a dozen phone calls from parents asking us, asking me, which is us, why the school district would have, um, made a decision to send the check into the travel vendor uh, the day before the schools were closed, when it was becoming evident that that was probably the direction that we were going to be going. Um, it may have, in the, I think that there are parents, uh, who are collaborating on their efforts to reach out. Uh, but I also think that it may not be, it may be, well, I do believe it was not as relev- it was not as probable that we were gonna be closed for the length of time that we have ended up being closed. Of course, meaning last spring, and that the trip was going to be, uh, canceled. So, that's the reason it's back on the agenda. And Amy, thank you for clarifying with David's assistance, uh, the issues of who can or cannot make motions. Cause I was thinking that neither Matt nor I could make any motion on this front, because we had both voted for the seventy five percent. So, that's the reason it's back on the agenda.
So, I'd understand both you and I can make a motion, Kevin, if we choose to.
Uh, that's what.
Yeah.
That's our understanding now, yes.
And I, I would just like to note too as well that I did not receive that email because I'm not able to check that email account. So, just please keep that in mind for future reference, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, as I look at the, their contract, what are the actual dates that? So, I'm looking at, up through January fifteenth, families paid seven hundred dollars. In theory, but the balance was then due by February fifteenth. When was that check written out to the, it must have been March, so they must, families must have paid the full, this happened after February fifteenth, families must have paid the full, full balance, is that the assumption we're, we're going under then? That's the assumption, as I look at the payment.
I understand, but then that's almost waiting a month to cut a check, is that what happened? You know, if, if everybody's money was due on February fifteenth, then, cause I mean, they, why would they have waited a month for months to cut that check?
Well, because.
Well, okay, so, being a San Antonio trip parent myself, I could, I can say that not everybody put the money in on one date, some people put it in, in two months or all before Christmas or right after Christmas. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, some people had it all in by, I don't know, December first. So, you know, so, so some of those, some of the questions, you know.
And some people raised the money from fundraisers.
Right.
Sure.
Others, other parents just decided to cut the check.
Right.
Um, and not have their student participate in fundraising. But the final payment was due on February fifteenth.
Mm, my thing is just, what I think Peter's trying to get at is, you know, the portion that the school district is responsible, I mean, certainly cutting a check two days before we closed down, yeah, I would assume that we were then, you know, culpable in making that error versus, well, if everything was paid, you know, the check was cut directly after February fifteenth, well, February fifteenth, who, I still didn't think that everything was going to close down, you know what I mean, which is, I mean.
Well, that's why I didn't, I wasn't saying that the school board, school district was culpable.
No, no.
That's what I was trying to say, because I don't think there was any intentional will on the part to be dumb to send it in the day before the schools closed. Because that's the way it's been characterized by more than a handful of parents.
Right.
That's why I'm actually verbalizing that way. And I had a conversation that went on for way too long and started out just fine and got really, really ugly. And I said to the parent, I said, at the end of the conversation, I said to her, before we respectfully shut down the conversation, I said, if you say one more word in this conversation on this phone call, you're going to turn an advocate into an adversary. Because you are questioning the intention and the, the goodwill of the school people and the school board. And that, and, and the point is that when there is so much misinformation out there and it continues to perpetuate itself, it just leads to people saying really nasty, ugly things.
Which is my point.
And we all know that.
Right, right, which is my point, saying, you know, when was the, the la- is that true? Was the last check cut two days prior or is that just a rumor that people are saying?
I don't know.
Yeah, is it?
I, what, to, to answer that, I thought when we looked at this as a finance committee back in November.
Right, November.
I believe there was a lot of email correspondence with Michelle Brown, back and forth. The last check looked like it was cut in February for the twenty thousand dollars.
Because I think that's an important thing to clear out, saying, no, we didn't.
Not March, right.
Yeah, right, because, you know, that is what I'm saying is that, well, no, we actually aren't really, I mean, that was February, that was a whole month. Who, who would have thought?
Correct, we didn't know intention.
Right, right, so that's what I'm saying though, but if this is what parents are believing, like.
Sure. So, please, Matt, hang on a real quick sec, please make no mistake, I have been very consistent. I do not believe in that, that it is the school district's responsibility to pay for something that the vendor should refund, number one. Number two, this whole experience has, I think, taught everybody the importance of trip insurance.
Yeah.
And that the school district is, it, if it's not, as we get into trips again, it needs to be very clear that these are not school trips, clearer than it's ever been.
True.
All right? And just because I think it's not our responsibility, doesn't mean that I feel that we couldn't or shouldn't assume some responsibility. And I said to the, I said to all the people, particularly this one woman, I said to her, you understand that as upset as you are, that the board hasn't refunded your money for this trip? It's like you are asking me to go to your next door neighbor who has no skin in the game at all and ask them to refund you out of their pocketbook. Now granted, for each person, it might only be eight dollars or eighty cents, but it's still something coming out of other people's pockets. And so, that's the tough business that the nine of us have to make decisions about, is, are we gonna do this, should we do this, what do we say to those who aren't involved in the process? So, that's where I come from in the whole conversation, because I feel that the school district, um, sometimes expenses, sometimes lessons are hard learned lessons. And, um, I honestly, and I know we're being recorded, I feel that we have made such strides to build goodwill in the community. I hate that things like this could cause a few people to peel off. It doesn't mean I'm right, I'm just telling you where I'm coming from. Barnes, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, uh, I agree with all the points that you made. I also think that we've learned a lot and I think that we do shoulder some of the responsibility, um, in this situation. And I also have been contacted by numerous parents, none of them have ended the way you described. Um, however, I do believe we have a responsibility either to use our resources to, our legal resources to continue to attempt to recoup the funds to return to the parents. Or, um, as Dean indicates, the juice isn't necessarily worth the squeeze there and we should refund at a rate of fifty percent and I would make that motion.
We have a motion by Barnes to refund fifty percent, which is different than the November conversation. Is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second the motion to, uh, continue the conversation, if there are any questions or comments, or to take it to a vote. Any other questions, we have a motion by Barnes and my second, pardon me?
I just agree with you, Kim. Kim, it's like, like you said, it's taking, I feel for these people, I really do, and I have vacation a lot and put a lot of money out there. I feel like you do, the people who hasn't paid for this trip are now paying these people back for a trip they signed up for. I, I'm having a hard time with it, I really am, I, I don't, I see. I don't know, I don't know what the solution is, I don't, I, I can tell right now it's probably not fifty percent.
I, I don't believe, uh, we should pay. And I think we should get out of this business in total. And if we are in this business, use our local bus company to do this.
One comment I wanna make is on the very last page.
Of?
Of this package.
Okay.
Yeah, um, on the bottom, it says make, please make all checks payable to Mozzanee High School.
And give it to Mr. Campbell.
Okay, so, you know, in my line of business, when I have a client who orders work, I don't ever order it for them because if they don't pay, I'm held liable. So, by us having that at the bottom, the, the check should have really been made out to Z Best. If we didn't wanna hold any type of liability. I mean, that's just how it is.
Was that for the only one hundred dollar deposit information?
Say that again? Yeah.
No?
All the checks that I turned down were to the district.
I'd like to know further if.
That's how you, I'm sorry, Megan, that's how you were able to tell when the check was cut? Cause it, it was cut, nobody paid Z Best directly, except the district.
And then I found the email, it was in March, what you said, that, um, we, we got an email confirming receipt of payment.
On what date?
I'll find it, Megan, um.
See, and I asked because that would affect.
The email from Z Best was March eleventh.
So, that would affect what my decision would be, not saying that we are at fault by any means, but, you know, nobody knew what was going to happen, nobody's really at fault, mistakes happen, it was an accident, you know, whatever.
That was a portion of it, that was the final payment, if you read the contract, there was fifty percent due prior.
Right.
So, Z Best stores, I'm on camera, should be absolutely ashamed of themselves for how this is, I mean, when you read this contract.
Well, I don't think that, that certainly this, this district isn't ready to be utilizing.
No. And I just, you know, they moved it to November, did it actually happen in November, was that their justification of now? There's so much to this that, I, I can't believe that a, a legal fight would be more than the forty seven thousand dollars.
That's what I'm thinking, have we looked further into contacting the specific vendors, you know, the hotel, the, the Hard Rock, the, you know, places like that, or have we just been asking Z Best, who obviously, you know, it's like we keep knocking at the door and they're not saying anything back, it's like, but what about the other routes that we could take?
Well, having been involved in planning and collecting funds for about fifteen national conventions, um, I can tell you that the vendors don't get paid until the services are rendered. In other words, the hotel doesn't get paid.
So, who has the money then?
Z Best?
Yes.
Yeah, and then we'd be able to.
So, I mean, just to add into, I'll look kind of calculate, you know, yes, we're upsetting parents who paid. Are we gonna be upsetting more people who lost money out because they took pay cuts, they lost jobs, they lost their daycares, et cetera, et cetera? Where does it stop? And I'm really disappointed in our legal counsel. This has been sitting on for a year. We received information from that legal counsel back in December on what would be their decision, now granted, he came back later still saying we are not liable. But our decision was based on exactly what he told us, they were bankrupt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, I mean, that's very poor representation, in my opinion.
Well, it makes us look bad.
Yes. And even though we're still not at fault, are, are we gonna be more at fault to other people out there by offering this much of a settlement back?
Kevin?
Yes, Matt.
I just wanna make sure that at some point someone in the room had mentioned the legal fees wouldn't exceed forty six thousand dollars. But we're talking about. the legal fees wouldn't exceed $46,000, but we're talking about legal fees not exceeding half of that. And as someone on the finance committee for the last multiple years, I'm looking at what we pay in legal bills, I don't think it takes all that long for us to realize $23,000 worth of legal bills in an effort to sue someone, so I just wanted to make it clear that what, in the balance test of the money that we'd be spending or the money we'd spend from a legal standpoint, we're talking about $20,000, not $40,000.
And I'm the one that made that comment, but I don't know that that's how it was projected to us in the memo that we received regarding the recommendation from our legal counsel.
That's fair enough.
And my question to you.
Well, excuse me, but the attorney wouldn't have known what the size of any motion. None of us know, there's the principal side of it for me on the point as well. Fair enough. Kelly, I'm sorry.
My question is, as I sit here and kind of listen, like, even doing half, will that appease them? That's my question, if they, or are they still gonna be angry and upset? That's my question.
So the conversation that we had at the last time we discussed this and then voted on it was that they would all have to personally file claims with the district and that that would then absolve the district of any further responsibility for additional compensation down the road. And that would be, that was discussed at the November meeting, I remember that was part of the conversation.
But in turn, Kevin.
Because that was part of Matt's motion the first time.
Correct.
I would include that in my motion if you're.
Sure, friendly motion, yes.
But now, keep in mind, like, what Kelly just said as well, we could have more parents coming here next month because they didn't get their whole refund back, that's what I'm wondering. And they're only getting partial.
Well, but if they're filing a claim, they know the amount that they would be filing a claim for.
Correct.
And that that would, they, by accepting any claim, I'm sorry, by accepting any payment, they would be understand, it ought to be understood that that was their final payment to resolve their outstanding claim against the district.
I understand, and that all makes sense, again, I'm just worried about what could come down the road from other.
You're worried that parents who might, that they might not know that that's what they're actually signing? When they get the check from Michelle?
Well, not like, but not only that, but again, parents who, we have other trips out there, you know, we looked at that as well. I mean, are we gonna have other parents coming back for these trips that might get, we don't know what's gonna happen next year.
That family was already made whole by the vendor, by 75%.
That 75% and they still want their total.
We still want it all?
Well, I understand.
Right, so again.
That I do understand.
Yeah, that's my question.
Well, we have a motion and a second.
I just want to add in.
Jessica, please, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, based upon all the discussion and all of that, I, and the principle, I cannot support this, just because I don't want to set a precedent going forward. The fact that, like Diane had pointed out, legal counsel had stated previously, just a couple of months ago, that the district was not liable. So I, for those reasons, will not be supporting this.
And I do agree that we are not liable, I do feel that way. I certainly understand why, I, as a matter of governance, I feel that way. But if I were a parent, writing a check out to the district and handing it into Mr. Campbell, and all previous trips like this were certainly done under the purview of the school district, not some distant vendor, that I think it's implausible for, I cannot believe that the parents, that we should expect the parents to think that this is not a school trip. That's how I, that's why I'm, that's why this is back on the agenda, so. So.
But it's also unfair for other taxpayers who don't have a vested interest to have to pay the bill as well.
Yep, and I would make the same case on a lot of different things. You know, it's unfair for taxpayers to pay for other things that only certain families take advantage of, whether it's football games or DECA trips or, I mean, we could have that conversation endlessly, so.
Absolutely, but it comes down to personal choice and personal risk, and that's what the risk that is accepted by signing up for these types of events.
And the discussion at the beginning was that there was possibly some culpability on the district's part. Families in February could have also come into the, and said, you know what, with what's going on, can I please be taken off this trip? And if you have not paid, can I have my money back from the school district?
That's true. All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion fails two to seven. Thank you for the conversation. Item 14C, truancy rates and processes for the high school.
Yep, I had Mr. Lehman and Mr. Grumager put together this form, there was a board request for information as regards to truancy, one note, I'm gonna drop down to number six, is that at this point, Marathon County has postponed truancy court, but there's other ways that we go about, at least at this time, as of January, they're working on resuming it and getting it going again for the end of this year, hopefully, and then into next year. Because obviously, there's some truancy issues, you can see by some of the numbers at the bottom. Well, our numbers are pretty close, we definitely have a little bit more truancy this year than compared to years pre-pandemic, which we're actively working on. There's a detailed process in terms of all are part of five days in a given semester. So all are part of five days in a given semester is unexcused and habitually truant. All right, there's also something out there called the 10-day rule, which isn't specifically related to truancy, it's all are part of five days in a given semester. So, so I'll give you an example using a high school student. If you're a ninth grade student and you're always missing sixth and seventh hour, and you do that on five consecutive days, on five different days, that's habitual truancy, even if you're missing just sixth and seventh hour, you don't have to miss the whole day or half of the day. The way the statute is written and where Marathon County, the county does it, as in most counties, that all counties that I've worked in, is that all are part of five days is the aspect, the word part is how to look at truancy. So there's a detailed information in there about processes, which I think is very good, if you look at number three, there is a truancy citation process with the city of Mozeney. I very much like that, that does not happen everywhere, just to give you an example, when I was running truancy in Kenosha and in Menominee, we did not have truancy citations in either of those places, which made it much more difficult to get lower level truancy, consequences for lower level truancy and to kind of ameliorate or change that behavior. So I think it's very good that we have a citation, a first citation, a second citation. So essentially, what that looks like, if somebody starts to go truant, you know, they'll start with meetings and detentions and phone calls home and that sort of thing. But if it continues, they'll move to citation, and then if the citations don't matter to the students, then it would usually progress to what's called a 118, 16 truancy meeting. And then you establish if there's a special education need, you establish if there's interventions you need to put into place. And if those things aren't set, you would move forward with a truancy citation. Right to truancy court, which is a county thing. So the citation is a city, a municipal citation, whereas truancy court is county and it's separate. So there's no double jeopardy there, it's a separate thing. So just be aware of that, COVID has changed that a little bit. There are some restrictions, though, that can be put into place, including, that are listed there on 5A, B, C, and D. A couple of things to make note of is they can restrict hunting licenses and driver's licenses. And that's something that is, that is more effective than cash.
Right, I was gonna say.
It's more effective than cash in a lot of, in a lot of cases, and very motivating for students that might unfortunately be in this situation. Questions?
There is also a citation for parents, for children under the age of 16, and it's called paying to the truancy of a minor.
Correct.
So elementary children and middle school children who fall under that can be cited for at 18 to the truancy of a minor, where the parent actually can get a citation. But the same protocols, you know, go into place where you try phone calls and interventions prior.
Right, because elementary school children really don't have that.
It's not their choice.
Yes.
That's a, that's a very good perspective. I was a high school principal for a lot of years, so I come at it from that bent, but that's a really good point, that truancy at the elementary level, it has more to do, in some cases, with parents, yeah.
I will say that, coming from a school district that went strictly with the county, having the Mozeney PD here to help with truancy is a lot quicker, a lot quicker.
I'd like to reinforce that piece as well, I have worked in multiple districts without that local municipal citation, and it isn't effective, you know, in order to stop something right away, we have the officer here. That is not common in all districts, like I said, Kenosha, where I worked years ago, and then Menominee right before here, neither of them had municipal citations, which made that process more cumbersome.
Kevin, a question?
Please.
I asked for this agenda item because I know other districts in our area are dealing with this problem, and it lands in my professional life, but I guess I'd just like your overall view, given the history of truancy in Mozeney, like, is there anything that you're concerned about right now in regards to the amount of truancy and the amount of unexcused absences? Or do you feel pretty comfortable that even with the lack of truancy court right now, that we're in a pretty good place overall? And I do that under the guise where if, there could be an isolated incident where somebody's not being successful because they're not coming to school, or parents aren't taking kids to school, but as a whole, as the district, is there anything that gives you concern?
You know, I'm really not concerned at this point, largely because some of the information that's been, it's a good question, by the way, that the, some of the information that's been presented to the board about academic successes, and then where we had struggled and where most districts were struggling, you know, in October and November, where we have shown a sharp decline in the number of Fs, there is a direct relationship between the number of students that are academically struggling and those that are truant, all right? So there's a direct relationship there, so the reason I'm saying that is the more that we've, and staff, credit to staff, credit to the people services staff that were in here earlier during the CNI committee, the principals doing home visits, and other staff doing home visits, making the phone calls, sending the letters, that there's been a sharp decline in the number of students that are failing, but they've also been pushing down the truancy rates as well, because I'll give an example, in some cases, if somebody's a remote learner and they're not logging in, then they're becoming truant, those truancy numbers are part of it. So I had a discussion with the principals about that, specifically the secondary principals, saying, okay, well, we can pull them in, we can give them a room where there's nobody around to make, and that's what we're doing in some cases, instead of, you know, because there's no truancy court, so we're saying, okay, you're a remote learner, but you're not doing anything, so you're A, truant, and B, failing, so we're gonna pull you in, we'll keep you isolated and six to 10 feet away, and we have locations where I know Mr. Grooby who's here right now, but also Mr. Lehman and Mr. Grumager, Mr. Reinschmidt, have been actively involved in all those activities in both of our secondary buildings. So that's a big piece, where we're being very active with it, and it was something when we were looking at not just the failure data, but also the disengagement data, I would say, meaning those that just weren't doing anything academically. Well then, where were they? I mean, there was a direct relationship between those students that were failing and doing extremely poor academically and truancy, so attacking the one helped us attack both of them, and I'm proud of the staff for getting after that. So it's a longer answer, but that's dialed in with why it's not really a concern, because I know they're gonna stay on it with the systems we have in place.
Does that help, Matt?
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that answer, and I think that one of the reasons you can answer that way is through the work of our staff and the fact that we've been open, where many of the other schools around the state that are having these issues don't have kids coming into the building and giving them an opportunity, so kudos to you and your staff, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, item 15A, WASB report.
Well, we had our big convention, virtually, I did the resolutions, it was almost four hours, it was only 10, remember that, but it was a new concept, new experience, it overall went well, every one of them passed. So that's that, there were some really good sessions I went to, I don't know if I'll ever get time to speak about them or if anybody wants to share that, it's getting a little late now. But like you said, for the most part, it was one of my better sessions that they had. And coming up, we have on the 17th, February, March 24th, and April 24th, we have a WASB legal video update, and then we have a school budgeting cycle online workshop, and that's March 4th, and that's all I know.
And then Kevin, if I can add, I know I sent you and David an email about some of the seminars that I had.
Yep.
Not that it's a rush to get answers on some of the questions, but if anybody is interested in what I put down, as ones I, you know, like one managing stress to improve leadership, you know, was there any stress this year? No, you know, but there was really good ones in there.
There was a lot of good ones.
Yeah, and it was, so I thought if I take my notes down, then anybody else that wants to kind of put notes down and pass them to their board members who maybe couldn't have attended the live portion of it, because some of my questions were out there, which was kind of neat, because they were, oh, here's a question. And I'm like, oh man, they wrote that down, please, yeah. But it was really interesting, so if I give back some of the answers to the questions, if you need me to resend it, just let me know. There was a lot of good answers.
They reread it today.
And it's not a rush, I mean.
One of my nominees.
I can send that around to everybody, I don't.
Yeah, if you don't want, if you want to reply with the answers later, maybe by the next board meeting.
Sure. Yes.
Yeah, nothing better. Yeah, I, like I said, and I, there was a good one, I think for Megan only, because you've never said, Peter, you have a feel of expulsion.
It was very educational.
What you can, cannot do, what you need, who can be in the room, and all of that, it's very, we've kind of taken away expulsions from us, you know, but, right, but it's very educational, because there's a lot to know about expulsion.
Yep. No.
I'll watch the thing. I don't want it. Yeah, there's so much to it.
Mr. Kaiser, CISA.
The doggy's trying to talk. Anyway, there's one thing on here that really kind of stuck the cord, and it's positive. The Cole Scholarship and Fellowship Regional Scoring has been completed, 13 students, and 12 teachers from CISA nine districts will be advancing to the state of Cole this month. That is, yeah, send the file.
Then the agency audit report had to just keep ripping.
Yeah, Mr. Kaiser stopped in and talked to me about it for an hour.
Yeah.
I really do appreciate that, Mike.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any future agenda items, other than the discussion about the attorney, we'll talk about that.
Yeah.
Any other agenda items, future agenda items? Jessica, Barnes?
Can you please elaborate on the attorney, what that is in reference to, please?
Diane had asked, she said, she indicated that it had probably been, well, probably more than 20 years. It's going on at least 30 years since we've revisited who our school district attorney is, and I think it, I agree with her that it makes sense that we ought to revisit that every couple of years and maybe put that out to bid, or maybe look at who else does this, that we might consider hiring. Just looking at, I think it's just good stewardship is the way that Diane was bringing it up. It wasn't about a dissatisfaction or approval of our attorney that we have for 30 years, it's just, is, you know, we should have a discussion about it, and what are, how often do other school districts revisit that relationship? So that was the context, Jessica.
Very well, thank you, and I would agree, it would be great in the next agenda to have a dis-
have a discussion and a possible recommendation or other bid options out there to, uh, review it as well, thank you.
We'll look at that, any other agenda items, anybody?
One item that'll be probably a big dollar amount item that's gonna be written about in the link, that's just coming right now, but it definitely come to either finance or the whole board meeting. Our new federal money, uh, CARES Act money, we had already received about 144,000. We were notified within the last few days that we're gonna be receiving close to half a million more, uh, with the possibility of even more than that, but we know about like 485,000. So we're definitely gonna have, uh, some detail and some work for the board in regards to those funds. So there's been a lot of information within the last few days about that federal money, which went to the state level, and then it's now been released.
So my understanding is there are two batches, one, the batch that's already in Madison, and did I understand that it was up to the legislature and not through the legislative process? In other words, not the governor's involvement to decide who gets that money? But the next batch is going to have to get full legislative and gubernatorial approval?
Yep, I'll make sure to have a full report on that, because, uh, joint finance was involved with a percentage of the dollars, and it was directly related to schools that were in person versus virtual, so they're distinguishing, where some of the dollars could be as high as three quarters of a million for this district, which is currently below 500,000, so I believe for certain by the next board meeting, we'll have a detailed breakdown of, they're called S R 2 funds, uh, so I'm calling them the next round of CARES Act money. Uh, so this is federal money, so it's definitely something for the board, uh, to be considering, how we're gonna be integrating it. We've been talking about this possibility, uh, now it should, it's gonna be a reality within the next board meeting or two.
So I got a text from a citizen asking, apparently, or indicating that apparently down in Naperville, Illinois, or one of the Illinois districts, that, uh, that there are now schools, yeah, Naperville, Illinois, that is distributing $10 million back to their taxpayers, because their schools have been shut. And I, and so the question was, when is Mozeni School District gonna send taxpayer money back to the taxpayers? I said, we've been open and we actually spent fund balance in order to be able to keep the buildings open, and spent monies on important things and busing and all this other stuff, so that that wasn't gonna happen here, but, uh, it's the political conversation that's happening, because this is extremely political, what you're talking about.
And I'll have some information, the next article, the link about this, but the board will definitely have some direct involvement um, in this, in the next or or April meeting.
Kevin?
Uh, Mike?
I I would like to delve into more of our extracurricular activities, the trips to, uh, distant lands, and policy, and, um, if we're gonna be in it, our.
You're not talking about sports trips or, I'm sorry, you're not talking about intra, like WIA stuff?
No. No.
Okay.
No, it's our, um, trips that we've been, uh.
Our big trips, like out of the country.
Out of the country.
Or out of the state.
Other state.
Yep.
Or even in the state, but not part of, yeah, I understand.
We get there for a look at our trip policies, I have no.
I have a couple of things, um, back to the discussion on getting a proposal and and legal services, this is just a general question. Do we have to do financial proposals, or are are we allowed as a district to do, like, requests for qualifications? That can include hourly hourly rates, but.
Are you talking about the lawyer thing?
Yeah, where we're comparing more the qualifications and not just necessarily having to take the the whole price.
We can, I can bring back a report.
For professional services, I think we can do that, right?
Yep, there's a lot of different ways that school districts go about doing that, but we definitely can bring that back to the next.
We're not required to take lowest price on anything.
No.
Any services or product we buy.
No.
And that's at least a 35-year policy, because I know, I'm positive that the school district used to purchase vehicles from Smith Brothers for many, 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 many years, and they were never lower than the vendors in Stevens Point, ever.
I just wanted to, I wasn't sure, I come from more of a municipal background, where oftentimes that's, professional services wasn't an issue, but when you bid a project, construction project, you have, the engineer architect better have good justification.
Sure, no, I get it.
Um, so then our committee, um, we approved the CISA contract, but one of the items in there was the speech pathologist, and there was like, what, 73 days, I think maybe some understanding of how that that is used versus the need to have a full-time speech pathologist, or is it, very difficult to get one, just maybe educating us on that.
I got it.
Uh, maybe CISA in general. Because that's really where it comes from particularly.
Got it.
All right, there's our next agenda.
Yeah.
We're good.
All right, um, I'll seek a motion, oh, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, but.
Speaking to my committee, if your agenda is filling up, that could wait until the roll or, you know, I mean, it's not, we don't have to have the answers.
We have, we do have some staffing in in March and April that we're required to do, so that's something that's already on the board's agenda.
Seek a motion, uh, to go into closed session, the board will go into closed session, pursuant to section 19.85, parent one, parent C of the state statutes, for the purposes of approving performance evaluation, daily compensation for the 2021, 2022 school year.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Herman, second by Zebro. Uh, roll call, please.
Barnes?
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 Yes.
Bauman?
Yeah.
Gorman?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Furmaney?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Stankowski?
Yes.
Zebro?
Yes.
Oh, yes.